Chris, we're gonna go to exec session and then interview this gentleman.
No, no worries.
I just did it before I came here. I got, yeah, I got the...
My daughter was still messing with my phone. She's cleaning, she isn't... My house usually bears...
Wait, a few more seconds for Rebecca? She's here. She's here. Can we, um, call the meeting to order, go to exec, and then still stay in here with the camera? So we can interview Richard with camera off? Since there's someone across the way. Can we hit pause on the recording?
I already looked at it, but you have to pause it and turn the microphones off so that most of you can see about...
How about if we go down to the building?
I don't have my, I don't have my keys right here. Do you have your building apartment keys? Okay.
Or I could use the treasure on the side of the keys from there.
Well, I don't wanna run around too much either.
No, I do have my keys.
Well, we do that with some, some folks that we're gonna appoint, but sometimes it's nice to speak privately to an interview. Um, okay, so I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to call the meeting to order. Um, and I'd like to make a motion, we go into exec session for the purposes of interviewing personnel.
Second?
All in favor?
Aight. Let's go.
Okay, downstairs?
Will you just step outside if you guys want to move?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm happy to leave. Definitely, I mean, not that...
We're gonna run downstairs.
I'm cooperating to leave.
Yeah.
Come with us.
Alright.
Do I need to displace him?
Will you turn off the lights?
Hey, you better come out and show Chris, 'cause it's looking like, uh, what's it gonna be, my stars? Nothing else to do, but it's like you can...
Take my clothes off, is that fair? If you wanna add a couple of paws and boos and... Please.
I'm thinking of planting a sun... Stars, I bet it was interesting. The thing of towns planning, I don't like the elementary sort of... Proactive, rather than reactive.
He's off the block.
I mean, camp, hold everything. I used to have these buyout events, like for...
What was he saying?
Me too.
The mic's in my...
Thanks. I moved and Tom seconded. Tom, you, you seconded to come out of it, but...
Okay.
Did we bore Terrence to tears, is that right? Did we bore Terrence too much? You're back on duty. Did we bore Terrence too much? You're back on duty.
Um, it's just a matter of...
It was nice to see you. Okay, so we're, we're back live, right? Our meeting is happening. So we have a, a public hearing of the proposed NBR zoning text and district footprint, so I'd like to make a motion...
Uh, we can't, we can't, we're not voting this.
Oh, because we have to wait till 7:30. Okay, so let's do the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the very republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, that's what I was planning for. The only thing I wanted to add to the agenda is an announcement regarding the workshop on Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. This is a discussion of flood resiliency. So... Any... Okay.
Um, the email, dated 9/11/2015, regarding the Southwest Park request to be a planned development project. Um, which is here at the table. Um, there's a list of thank yous to those who provided and donated to our visitors. Um, there's the request for training for the court. And the EAF that was sent to the board for the village training, um, late this afternoon, as a piece of talk for everyone.
Okay, so let's do one at a time. So we're, we're already doing the thanking the folks from the sister city, but now we have a list of individuals to thank. So that's very useful. So when you're talking about the email from David Gilmore, that's the, the EAF regarding the proposed legislation, the NBR zoning?
No, it's the, it's an email that's here at the table. It's the talk of the email, um, that discussed, um, this line.
I don't have that email.
Okay. September 11, 5:01 PM.
Oh, I see it now. I actually, um, may have been confused about why I asked to add this, because I'm not familiar with the details about this project.
Would you like me to, uh, research and bring it back to the table for our next meeting?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what we're referring to there. And then we're going to add an approval regarding a webinar for the clerk's office. Right? Okay.
Does anyone oppose to that being on the consent agenda? There's a word to go.
Uh, I support that being on the consent agenda.
Out here, what was that?
Um, having the webinar on the consent...
Gotcha. Okay.
Thanks.
And, uh... What are you talking about?
Let's make the announcement about the bike fed committee chair, uh, who's stepping down after a long term as chair. I have not yet attended my first bike fed committee meeting, although I've spoke... Well, that's not true. I did the last meeting, uh, of the year before they took their summer hiatus. Uh, I will attend the meeting on Monday night, at which time there will be discussions, I know, of whether there are volunteers to be brought to the town and village, uh, for, uh, a replacement chair. But I would want to put this on a future agenda for our further consideration.
Sounds good.
So an announcement I would have is, uh, that there's gonna be a meeting, uh, early next week, uh, including the mayor, uh, the treasurer, myself, and Bob Fagan and Andrea Russo. And we'll report back to the board next meeting on the issue of public access and videography. And it doesn't have to be tonight, but on a, on an agenda, I would like to... And it doesn't have to be tonight, but on an agenda, I would like to request an item called Maurice Whitman Highway.
I'm sorry.
Maurice Whitman Highway. There's no urgency to do it tonight.
You know what I would like to do is this email from planner Gilmore where he's talking about this segment of sidewalk on Prospect Street. Now that David's here, I guess you sent an email that I said, let's add this to the agenda and how it relates to our discussion with highway supervisor Marks. Does this ring any bells for you?
Sure.
Okay, so we are going to add that to discussion item number four.
Especially since we built you a podium.
But still no, no table for Tom.
This is the email.
I would rather change that to not yet.
Drill, baby, drill. And no despair.
Okay, any other additions before we approve the agenda?
No.
I'd like to make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, announcements. So I will again mention the flood resiliency discussion that we are having here at Village Hall at 7:00 PM Thursday evening.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow evening. And we are having this community workshop meeting as a result of a grant that our village received from the EPA. So we encourage any community members interested in watershed areas and green infrastructure to attend.
I will attend representing the village board. I may not be alone, but I'm gonna be there.
I'll be there as well.
Okay. So the next announcement, we were going to officially thank the various community volunteers who helped with our city's Sister Cities visitors. There were 18 students visiting from Nini, Japan, and we had a really impressive group of local volunteers and local businesses who participated and provided a fantastic experience for these, for these visitors. And I'd also like to thank deputy mayor Rotsler for being the point person from the village board to make it all happen and making things run as smoothly as they did and working with the local businesses who were incredibly generous in terms of donating food for a couple of events where the community hosted these, these visitors. And Rebecca was gonna identify some of the individuals and businesses.
The list that I don't have in front of me, unfortunately, I don't know if you, you may not have seen, we'll do it the next time. We can do this in two segments. The list that I don't have is the families who provided homestays. There were 11 altogether, and I'm very sorry, I just don't remember all 11 sets of families. But they did provide for the students as well as their host for the entire week. Some families split them, you know, throughout the week. There were other families that, that provided food on different occasions, transportation, et cetera. And in terms of the people who were not actual homestay hosts, I will read the list. Dave Kakamo, Salmon Susan Slotnick, Linda and John Bab, Vicky Russell, SUNY Ulster was Richard Kakamo, Lisa Merzalis. They were also hosted at SUNY New Paltz, Kingston Hospital, Child Care Woodland Pond. And SUNY New Paltz was Beth Vargas, Vikira Shimato, Nathan Clerica. And their interpreters were Mo To' Amai, Monica Tamannanwa. And then Eric Willockson at the Mohawk Mountain House was a host for A Good Morning of Hiking. Financial contributors as well as gifts were State Farm Insurance, Midi's Auto Body, Dedrick's Pharmacy, Ulster Savings were on the list, Village of New Paltz. And then in terms of local businesses, The Bistro, The Bakery, Bacchus, they all donated food. And also, In Good Taste donated gift certificates to the host families, which was a really nice acknowledgement to them. And also, they co-sponsored shirts where each of our 18 guests were able to go into a mixture, which is the store on the corner of Main and 208, which makes, you know, yeah, souvenir shirts, et cetera, et cetera. So each of them was, were able to go in and pick out their very own T-shirt, although I did pick out their host T-shirt, he didn't make it in. And also, the Gilded Otter donated their shirts as well. So, you know, each student went and our host went back with at least two T-shirts from their New Paltz visit. And next week, we'll thank the host families.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Yeah. I'm really very impressed with the way you carried this off, so thank you.
I had a lot of help. Deborah Ouch.
Rebecca and I attended both the welcome ceremony and then the sayonara. And you could really tell in the room during the sayonara that these, these students really enjoyed themselves visiting New Paltz. It was, it was really a sweet time. And I actually think the, you could tell that the volunteers were maybe a little tired from, you know, being such great hosts, but it seemed like they really enjoyed themselves and really, you know, got a lot out of, you know, representing our community. So thanks again.
I'm gonna add three, sorry. Vicky Russell, who has also traveled to our Sisters City, performed music and learning a song at the last minute, which was a favorite song of one of the students. She also does Leaving on a Jet Plane. And Reno's Pizza hosted the students for an afternoon, and Gomenka Sai provided traditional Japanese food at both the welcome and the sayonara. Sorry, I didn't. We can go on and on and on and on.
So moving on to public comment. Anyone here for public comments? Okay. I'd like to make a motion we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Like to make a motion that we open the public hearing on the proposed NBR zoning text and district footprint. And this legislation has existed and what a committee of village board members and planning board members got themselves involved in a couple of months ago was to fix an inaccuracy in the, the text of the legislation, and that's essentially what has been done. And to describe the legislation very briefly, the area that we're talking about, which is just north of, or the northern part of the village on 32 North, requires any new development to be multi-story and mixed use, meaning retail down below, residential up above. And the, there's a, there's a height restriction too. So I believe it's a total of 40 feet. Is that correct, David?
I believe it's.
Thereabouts. So that is what this proposed legislation is about. Anyone here want to comment on this?
Actually, I can be involved.
Okay.
Please take notice that the public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees, Village of New Paltz on September 16, 2015, at 7:30 at Village Hall, 25 Platteville Avenue, New Paltz, pursuant to Zoning Article 9, Section 212-6, entitled Amendment and Land Use Moratorium per Local Law Number 8 of 2015, imposing a three-month moratorium on establishment or enlargement of all uses in the North Chestnut Street Gateway Zoning District. To consider amending Village Code, Section 212-6, entitled District Regulations by Change Subsection D, to establish a neighborhood business residential mixed due to zoning district. The proposed modification, including the establishment of campus and site development standards and changes to minimum and maximum height, minimum yard dimensions and standards for lighting, open space, street furniture, on-site parking. Upgrades are also proposed in the zoning schedule A, Use Schedule, zoning schedule B, Density Control Schedule, and District Footprint, as depicted on the official zoning map, Schedule C. Also included in the proposed local law are amendments to zoning definitions contained in the Village Code, Section 212-5, to include new or revised definitions for the terms of multi-story, mixed-use district, and professional office, non-residential district, and offices general and professional. The enforced proposed local law also mentions Village Code, Section 212-6, entitled Designation of Districts by deleting B, Highway District, and substituting this for the NBR. Please excuse me, I said section 9, actually, so article, I said article 9, actually, article 9. Please take further notice that pursuant to Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law, State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEER, the SEER public hearing will be held by the Village Board of the Village of New Paltz at the enforced time for purposes of reviewing any SEER impact relative to the proposed zoning codes. Notices hereby also given that pursuant to Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law, SEER, and its implementing regulations contained in NYCRR Part 6.17, the Village Code of the Village of New Paltz, has a preliminary classification that this is a Type 1 action, has determined that it will act as lead agency for the purposes of SEER review, will coordinate environmental review pursuant to Section 8 of the ECL and the implementing regulations with any other interested and involved agencies that will conduct, that will conduct a SEER review during the public hearing referred herein. For additional information or related to the SEER view of this proposed action, please contact the front, act, bill, or letter to the address and telephone number listed above. Please take further notice that pursuant to Article 8 of ECL and its implementing regulations, any person entitled to be heard upon the, the Village Board SEER review of this action.
I wasn't paying attention. Could you repeat that?
No.
I do, I believe that's the single longest public notice that I've ever heard.
Nicely done, Katie.
So I can share that we have the, the EAF long form completed. Our attorney and village planner has spent a fair amount of time analyzing and completing this form for our review and as lead agency will be determining, you know, making a SEER determination. But right now, we have a public hearing. Anyone from the public want to comment on this proposed law? No?
I have a question.
Great.
Maybe the former chair of the planning board can answer this, provide context for the next public hearing. From the state we're in now, where we're, the language is pretty much hammered out by the, the planning board going out to the public for comment, how long is it gonna take before this process is finished and we can approve a final version of this modified? How long is, how long do you envision?
I can comment on that. So this proposed legislation is in the hands of the county planning board, so they will review it at the beginning of October. And as soon as they comment or sign off on this proposed legislation, then we could hold a special meeting to move forward to adopt the legislation and set it up, send it up to the Department of State.
Legislation being our zoning law? Or are you talking about the moratorium here?
Well, which, we're talking, we're, we're still talking about the, the NBR.
No, my ignorance is showing. I wasn't aware the, the county had to review our locals.
They have to review both.
Okay. So a moment of, moment of learning.
It's, it is a little confusing because we're doing them in parallel and we need the county to comment on both of them.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's tricky to keep track.
I know, it's, you know, I wasn't sure if the process would actually take as long as possibly to the end of the year, which is, you know.
No, what we're, what we're anticipating is that this legislation will be adopted by the end of October.
Okay.
And jumping ahead, we're extending the moratorium through 12/31. But the anticipation is as soon as the legislation is adopted, we end the moratorium. So this moratorium should be done, the legislation should be adopted by, no one hold any of us to this, but the end of October.
The legislation should be effective by.
Okay. That's good information for the public too. I just didn't know that, so thank you.
Yep. So based on what we're seeing here as far as public comment, does anyone else have questions before? I was gonna make a motion to close the public hearing for oral comments, but let, but also suggest we leave it open through the 23rd of September for any written comments?
Second. If you blew that?
Yeah, that, that's my motion, sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So end of business, we'll accept written comments through 9/23. So I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing regarding the amendment of Local Law 820 or 2015 to extend the moratorium on the establishment or enlargement of all uses within the North Chestnut Street Gateway District. So this is the moratorium related to this proposed zoning change. And, and again, this just allows the, the moratorium to continue before the legislation is in effect. Well, you gotta read your notice again.
It's much shorter this time. Please take notice that the public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Paltz on September 16, 2015, at 7:30 PM at Village Hall, 25 Platteville Avenue, New Paltz, New York, regarding proposed adoption of a local law extending the current moratorium on the establishment or enlargement of all uses within the North Chestnut Gateway District in the Village of New Paltz through and including December 31, 2015. Any person entitled to refer to said proposed local law at such public hearing, copies of said, uh, said proposed local law are available for review at the clerk's office.
Okay, anyone from the public who care to comment? Okay. I'd like to make a motion we close public comment and, or close the oral portion of public comment and keep the written portion of public comment open through end of business on 9/23.
I, I know that you're not meeting any more than 14 at this time, so.
We're most likely gonna have to have a special meeting just to move this along.
I just wanted to give you that, certain.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so we can move on to new business. We have a presentation from highway superintendent Chris Marks on a three-year phase plan for Henry W. DuBois. This is something the bicycle and pedestrian committee have vetted and many folks in our community are excited about. So I asked Chris to update us on what, what the town was planning in terms of their updates and the timeframe for Henry W. That's all. You wanna, you can take this one.
Maybe you all can ask around, take a look. Sorry, I think I've lost. In, I believe it was 2014, the town went seeking a grant for the, putting in a bike pedestrian lane on Henry W. from North Put Corners all the way down to Route 32. The grant hasn't come through. They also seeked other money. I believe it was Charles Schumer who come down and talked about giving some money and it just, it didn't, just didn't work out. It went other projects. It was, I attended the New York Rising meetings, we talked about this, but it was, really wasn't deemed a, an emergency sort of thing, or things that would harden our infrastructure. It was more of a, a want, although it was a safety concern. Past year, the town's portion of Henry W. DuBois has degraded to the point where I have to do what's called patch paving. Patch paving is putting a very slim surface of blacktop on top of an old surface so that it's ridable. And all we're doing is putting good money on bad. So looking at this plan, I modified it in my own head. I don't have it all worked out yet. I believed it would come to a three-year phase. If I was to do it in one year, it would take a year and a half of my total road budget, over $600,000. I figure if we split it up into three phases, I could mix it in with the rest of my total. I figure if we split it up into three phases, I could mix it in with the rest of my road repair, and we could be taking care of one problem, which we have to address, and by also taking care of the rest of the 120 lane miles of road in the town that we also have to maintain. The original plan calls for sidewalks. Sidewalks, as I'm not telling you all anything, I believe are very expensive. I have a problem maintaining them. We have, we maintain the one over the bridge, over the thruway, and it's always, it's always a pain in the wintertime. We're just not set up for that. Not that it can't be done, but it's, it creates a lot of extra work. So the plan I'm coming up with is to narrow the roadway to 10-foot lanes, giving us five-foot bike pedestrian lane going both east and west. Now by narrowing the road, it gives us, it does a few things. One, it gives us our shoulders, so we can actually put the bike lanes in. It also has a tendency of slowing traffic down. Now I have to talk to the mayor, he asked if it wouldn't be a bad, would it be a good idea or a bad idea if simultaneously the village had worked on the village's end of Henry W., which is from Route 32 to Prospect Street? I went out today, made another inspection of the road, measuring it, looking at the blacktop, and the road's in great shape. It measures anywhere from 31 feet in width to 40 feet in width. So Henry W., I don't know whoever had the line of sight, putting in their string was a little crooked when they built the road. So theoretically, if the village wanted to start on their end, it's pretty much just going to be paint, scribing in lines, and you will have your bike lanes. There's already existing sidewalks, so nothing has to be done. Coming out of the apartments just down from Prospect heading west, and I apologize, I don't know the name of those, I forget, across from More Yellow Pool, there's a sidewalk that comes out of there.
Mulberry Square.
Mulberry Square, thank you. That sidewalk could still either be led into this five-foot stretch for the bike ped lane, or it can just be left, and then if ever you wanted to add sidewalks, they can be added. Speaking to the town's engineer, Dave Klausert, he's always pushed for, build it, get it done, but if we can leave the room for sidewalks for future, if this is where we go, to try and do that. I believe that's a good idea, you know, you never want to hedge your bets in the one thing. The first stage for the town would be North Put Corners to Old Mill. That's the easiest section for us to do. There's only a few phone boxes that have to be moved, a very, very moderate drainage work, and extending the shoulders about three feet, which is already the type of shoulder we maintain. Typical, the town's right-of-way is 25 feet from the center line or 14 feet from the edge of the blacktop that we maintain. So we can do that in this section without intruding on anyone's property, from the way it looks to me, and in the same lanes. Now this, if, this will leave the next section, which is the more difficult section, the most difficult section, between Old Mill and Mannheim. There's a lot of infrastructure that we move, telephone poles, few fire hydrants, nothing out of the way, nothing that can't be done, of course. But we do start to enter into a different scenario for doing the work since the drainage on the north side of the road is the town's, the drainage on the south side of the road is the village's. So in my remedial way of thinking, I like to start a project and try and keep it going, and at the same time work, if you don't start, it just never seems to get started. And I have to pave the road anyway. So I just, I hate putting good money on bad. So if I finish that one section, it's done, the road should hold up for 10 years with moderate resurfacing, and we keep going on from there. From Prospect Street up, I remeasured it, and if you walk it or bike it, you will notice that there's two large ditches on either side. We believe that we can get those, take those ditches out, the blacktop ditches, actually pave over them. Tilt the, tilt, that would be the, picture that as the bike lane. Put a very slight slope on it and put a very large edge on the end to catch any water. Now where we hit driveways, we have to use a special culver pipe that has the extended grates in it, which are bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. Depending on how the drainage comes out, we might have to do that whole section on both sides that way, which is a costly expense, but it would be the only way that we could accommodate the driveways definitely on the north side. The south side might not be an issue because the driveways go up and then in, where the driveways on the north side go off the road. So there's really nothing I can build up without cars ripping out their undercarriage or flooding someone's property. So, you know, it was, it was just a conversation the mayor and I had about, you know, working together, you know, or doing projects simultaneously. By the old plans, and I can furnish the people, you know, you all with a set of the costs that were for this grant, or the scope of the work. Again, I've changed it a little bit. There was a brick divider that was supposed to be put in between the travel lanes of cars and the actual bike pedestrian lane. It seemed, it's very nice, but seems costly. I believe by changing the asphalt surface from the proposed Nova chip to a regular blacktop surface, we can put a narrowed rumble strip in that section and then paint over that rumble strip as that's, that's our delineating line. So you'll have a visual, and you will also have a narrowed strip, so if a car veers off or a bike veers off, there is a, you know, an actual physical bump, something, which I believe would be a help. And then painting's a big thing, shadows, signage, more in the bike lane, making it a different color, so it differentiates between the regular bike lane and the car lane. So I plan on, you know, a little back, and I don't know if it's the same way for the village, but it probably is, I can't just pick projects at will. I have to submit a 284 form to the town board, and that has to be approved. Once that's approved, I can do projects for the roads I have picked, or I have to amend it to do another project. This will be on my 284 form for 2016. It will not, from the understanding I had, be chips reimbursable, because it is not the whole road. Chips gives us a delineation of start to stop, or town line to, you know, the end of a line. I have to do a little more research on that, but either way, it's, it's within, it would be within my budget of close to $400,000 a year, as it stands now, for paving.
Can I ask, what was the input you received from the Bike Ped Committee?
They were very much for it, everyone. You know, this went to school kids having a place to save schools, there was a thing about that. Everyone was really for it, but it was, it was a project in its own, you know, a separate thing from anything that I would be doing to resurface the roads for the town. We just, I've gotten, we've gotten to that point where the road needs to be resurfaced, so if we're going to do it, let's do it once. We'll modify it so we can afford it. We'll leave enough room if we want to add on to it, like with a possible sidewalks, you know, thinking ahead a little bit. And I get, you know, at that point, seeing how this would go, I'd come back to the village and ask, you know, how can we move together or forward together on our drainage? Our crews do similar work and we do a lot of different work. You know, the town's crew does more blacktop work, excavation, that's what we're set up for. Where the village crew does more closed water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, not that they don't do paving, but we're more set up for it. So I would, I would think maybe at that point, some technical assistance in moving some infrastructure would help us out working together, and we would take care of the blacktopping and the excavating, you know, sticking with both of our strengths. And we'll have to work out the money part of that when we get to that, but that wouldn't go to the second, the second-year phase.
I could provide a little background. David Gilmore and I talk about a lot of the projects that are regularly floated in this community, and we wanted to understand what was the latest thinking in terms of this town-led project. So I called Chris to get an update, and, you know, as he's described, there's been a few iterations of this project, and he described his current thinking and this idea of a three-year phase plan. So subsequently, I reached out to answer your question to the Bike Ped Committee to speak directly with Bill Weinstein to understand where the Bike Ped Committee was in terms of their thoughts on this, this version of bicycle and pedestrian access on Henry W. And Bill was completely supportive and very excited about the direction that this plan is headed and the idea that Chris has put together. So Chris and I were brainstorming during our conversation about, well, is there an opportunity to formally work with the village and update the area that's south of, or west of Prospect Street down to 32 North? So that's what we're doing here now, and killing two birds with one stone to see if we, what we think about that, and also for, for the village to be up to speed in terms of this, this town-led project.
I think if we were to go along with this project for our section of Henry DuBois, this would drastically increase the safety of that area. When you turn from Prospect Street as a pedestrian, there is no sidewalk for the first property until you get to the second, and the sidewalks are inconsistent, they're there, and then they stop, and then there's a telephone pole. You're pushed into the street, and you're pushed back onto the sidewalks. As a Prospect Street resident, I can tell you, I see people all summer in bathing suits coming down Prospect Street, making that left, and they, majority of them have small children, and they're forced into the street, it's very awkward, and I'm very excited that we have a potential remedy to that situation.
So a couple things. What we need is paving Henry W. What we want is also to have bike ped lane and sidewalks, and what we can get is the bike ped lane, and the sidewalks are a bit much.
Yes.
Okay. Now, you have your phases one, two, and three, I understand that, and there's also a village section. So in this, working together, are you, number one, suggesting that the village do its work when you do your Phase 3? So if they're done?
No, you, I mean, right now, Phase 3 was just in the, in the town plowed sections, which is from North Put to Prospect Street. And I'll be honest, when I first dreamed this up, I never, I forgot all about that, well, you own one side of the street, we own the other. So, you know, I could, I could extend, I can expand one way, but, you know, without permission, you know, I couldn't expand the other way, and, onto the village drainage.
My confusion is, so at the end of year one, assuming we get right to our stuff, and don't wait, you have a bike ped lane?
Two ends, with, with nothing in the middle, correct.
Okay, for a year, and then?
Yep, then the next year would be from Old Mill to Mannheim, and then the final year would be the connector to?
It would be like connecting the two parts of the Continental Railroad, right?
Yeah, the final spike. You know, and the village's end really is, right now, is paint. It's marking it out and, and striping.
Right, the other thing I, I think I understood, like, I think I understood, was during Phase 2, you thought that the village would be as helpless with some of that work that you were doing in Phase 2, in the town part?
Yeah, there's hydrants that have to be moved, you know, we have to deal with Verizon moving utilities, there's telephone poles, there's a few of those. Anyone who's dealt with, you know, Verizon or Central Hudson, it's been, it's not an easy issue, especially to get them to move stuff. It's not, you know, just pick it up and move it. But these things have to be moved. The hydrants, I mean, that's, you know, those guys do it in their sleep, you know, they're, they're great with the plumbing infrastructure, lack of a better term. So, you know, they could be a big help with us for that, as we could do with the blacktopping, you know, we own our own paver, you know, excavators, stuff like that, and larger trucks. So it's, it would be a good meld of us using each other's skills. But on Phase, Phase 2, and possibly, probably start a Phase 3, we would need that support from, you know, the village crew on helping us move whatever water infrastructure that's there.
And have, have you talked to Blue about this yet, or did you want to talk to us first, then to add?
I spoke with Nick from the DPW today about the village section of the project, and, you know, as Superintendent Marks described, it's, we're probably in a more fortunate position than the town, because the lower section of Henry W. is already wider, it doesn't involve any widening. The blacktop quality is already good, so we're not repairing blacktop, so it's just as simple as painting lines, and Nick and I seem to be on the same page in that it's really just that straightforward, and that the village has a walk-behind line painting machine. So, you know, that was our preliminary discussion, you know, we're, Nick, neither Nick nor Blue have signed off on anything officially, but I've had an informal chat with, with Nick about the concept, but David was going to add something.
So maybe I can give also?
Do the, do the, do the mic.
David Gilmore, village planner, and so also, maybe I can also give a preview of the upcoming agenda item too. And that is that the tip is essentially the capital plan for the regional transportation improvement projects that are funded by state and federal and other funds. You have to have projects on this regional capital improvement plan in order to get state and federal funding. The great news is, counselor, that there is money for four sections of sidewalk improvements where we have sidewalk gaps in the community. It's TIP Project 8, I think it's, I need to do my G P G. It's TIP Project 876.22, and we've received grant funding for improving segments of Henry W. DuBois, Prospect Street, and Huguenot Street, and I should know the third one, I think it was also Church. And so my understanding is that this project will be going into design this fall and winter, and we will be in construction next year. So we have, this is a project that Blue does know about in terms of those sidewalk capital improvements and gap filling of sidewalk, and so we have an opportunity also to coordinate with doing the painting and striping and traffic safety improvements that we might do on that section, that sort of third, or I guess, lower section also. And specifically on Henry W. DuBois, it's my understanding that the sidewalk gap to be filled is from Prospect West until the sidewalk on that south side of Henry W. DuBois. So it's great news for the sidewalk along that segment. And again, that project would be going to construction in, as I understand it, 2016 versus from the preliminary schedule that we've developed within this local project that's being developed with the state and federal funds. So, and the other thing I did want to mention is, not only did the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee chime in on this, but in June, Mr. Marks did brief the Land Use Transportation Committee on this very project as well.
When you reference the sidewalks on Prospect Street, are you referring to the southwestern portion of the very badly, the sidewalk blue stone that's in very bad shape that most people actually tend to walk in the street rather than walk on the sidewalk? Are you talking about the portion in between Slate Street and Henry DuBois that currently has no sidewalk?
Right. So that's my, I stated my understanding for the footprint for Henry W. DuBois, and it's a small segment on Prospect, and I believe it's to fill the gap, based on the narratives that I've read, and as that project develops, I'll keep you brief, but I believe it's on the north side, the, excuse me, the northwest side of Prospect to work on the gap. That's my understanding. But I do have some incomplete understanding, and I'm sorry for that, but it's just based on the information that. on the information that I have on a project that's still developing since our award.
This is the area?
Well, well, this is the area for the new street. This is my neighbor, this is my house, this is my other neighbor.
I didn't say so.
The sidewalks ended Slate Street.
So, does anyone else have comments, questions for Superintendent Marks?
I just have one uh kind of surmise. I'm guessing that if we were to lend them support and they lend us some support, I'm not hearing the amount of support we would need uh for paving, since our pavement is already in very good shape. But would we need an IMA to provide services one municipality for the other, or would just our general agreement be sufficient?
Have you thought about what you're asking for, what we would be trying to work out in exchange?
No, the only, I mean, there will be some cost on the south side ditches in phase two and three, because that's, uh, it would have to be blacktopped over and, you know, a small part. I mean, typically, uh, working with other towns, it's just a, you help me, I help you. You know, it, we've found it.
And you, and the village and town do that regularly?
Yeah, we, you know, we were on the water main break the other night. And it's, you know, it's, it's something that I've aspired to get to, that we work with other towns like that. It, you know, no offense to the board, it's easier to keep the, the head honchos out of it and just let the, the workers say, look, let's get it done. And then when it's all done, you know, if, you know, you did something, then, well, my bad. But it, it's always worked out, you know, dollar for dollar, you're never right to the penny. It doesn't work that way. Um and I, I have no issue with that. We worked very well with Blue and his crew and I, I, you know, opposite ear, nothing but respect for them. So I, I don't see any issues.
Good. Okay, so I think that answers Tom's question.
Yes. Yeah, so the board has no problem with, with Chris contacting Blue and trying to work this out?
No. My only question, um, I didn't quite understand what you were saying. I can see where the village line is, understanding that the drainage from basically just above Harrington down to Prospect or just below Prospect. That's on the village side where we would need to, the drainage net, the village will do that work, or is that a part of your?
Well, that would be, again, the, the drainage would require either excavating and, you know, if it's, if it's just excavating and blacktop, that's, that's easy. If we have to add pipe to that side, then that's where a cost, and that's where I'd have to come in front of the, the, the board. And, you know, once we get this ironed out more and say, you know, there's a possible cost of X to do, you know, to, to finish this project the way we want. I don't foresee it, looking at it, um, but until we really get around and, you know, sometimes we have to dig around a little bit and make sure what we're um getting into.
Right. Yeah, it's just, it's not that long of a section, but?
No, but it's, you know, it doesn't take very, very long to be very cost, costable or costly.
I, I would like to um, you know, be kept abreast of what you're thinking of in terms of moving forward with your initial phase and to see if, while you're planning for that initial phase, can we do something simultaneously on the, the village-owned western section of Henry W. So like as you're completing your, your design phase or determining what's gonna be done when, um, you know, I, I'd be very comfortable being?
Well, what I will do is I will, once I get this, and again, I mean, the, the board, I, I can't see it happening, but you never know. I mean, the town board might, you know, not approve my two eighty-four and this might, you know, and then I would go to a, a repair phase where, you know, we start to harden shoulders on our, because our end needs a, you know, a lot more um infrastructure work as far as um hardening the shoulders, paving. Um and then, you know, the blacktop would come later, you know, budget is, our budget's in January and it hasn't been approved yet, it was still in the prelimin, preliminary stages. Um but I'd be glad to share that, you know, to come back before you with the two eighty-four once it's signed, so I know I've got a project.
Perfect.
Um and then after that, I will meet with the town's engineer, which as of now, I have a budget line for. And he and I will work out a modified plan of what I'm thinking of, along with uh possible services and costs that might be incurred by the village, by us carrying on in phase two and three. If that would be, you know, and then we could talk about it, if we have to modify things, then we, you know.
One thing I just wanna add, um, the village did purchase a Shero stencil, which, you know, if we were going to start doing our, the, the painting type of work on our area, um, and of course, that's probably something we'd wanna share with you as well.
Yep. Yeah, and we, you know, we, we typically share equipment when it, it comes, you know, when one of us needs something that the other one doesn't. So it's everything from painting to heavy equipment. So it's, I don't think that'd be an issue either.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Next discussion item, number five.
If you could email us a copy of this, that would be awesome. When you, thank you.
Yeah, we have a large printer, we can have a copy too.
So item number five, a discussion of a request for relief from historic Huguenot Street. Um, they had a water bill higher than normal due to a leak, and they were requesting some um relief from the, the cost of that water bill, I think it was an amount of four hundred and something dollars?
Four ninety?
Did I get that number wrong?
Four ninety-five?
Four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any discussion?
That was actually the second consecutive bill that they had that was higher than their typical. They included six months of bills, which were all exactly the same, until they got to the May reading, which was eighty-one dollars, more than doubled. And then, uh, correct me if I'm wrong here, we alerted them of a potential leak because uh we were doing our due diligence and saw that their uh water usage had increased drastically and at that point, David came forward.
I've actually um experienced this myself, where I've had a leaky toilet and was using more water than I had been historically, and I got contacted by the village and was told, you're probably leaking water somewhere and you should find out where it is.
Your responsibility, though.
Right. No, it's, yeah, and it's, it's, um, I'm pleased to say that it's a, I think it's a very valuable service that our DPW is able to identify that and proactively let residents know um when they, when they think someone might be using or paying for more water than they're probably using.
Especially in light of all of our water reduction efforts.
And this is not a new initiative by our DPW, they've been doing this for years. Any other comments?
So I'm okay granting a reduction, uh, but I wouldn't, you know, it is the responsibility of society to repair the leaks that are there, so I would not want to, if there are continued bills or large, I wouldn't wanna be reducing future bills too. I'm gonna do this once, and I don't know if we need to convey that to them at all. Like, I wouldn't wanna see this, this again next, next month.
I'm actually not comfortable providing the relief. Um, you know, I think this is pretty common, that, that folks have to endure this. Um, I, I've seen past village boards have to deal with exactly the same question and often the response is, this is an unfortunate reality of?
Well, if there's, if there's past practice that I'm not, I'm not aware of, thank you for educating me.
Yeah, I, I, I have seen past boards do this, maybe Tom can comment.
We, we refused to grant relief, Rebecca helped me twice during this past year, once for a gas station on uh Main Street where the leak was determined to be within the gas station rather than that it was a leak that was on village property or it was our responsibility, it was, it was their responsibility, given these parameters that we used, and we did not grant it. I am sympathetic, though, to a, a not-for-profit organization. And it may be that uh we could take that into consideration without being accused of arbitrary and capricious behavior, which I would not want to be guilty of.
One thing, one thing that we have done in the past was allow um the customer, for lack of a better word, um, put to get, do a payment plan with us where there weren't any um surcharges or interest or penalties for um the payments being made over a period of time. And the four ninety-five was the total of their bill, um, so I don't, I don't believe they're looking for relief in that full amount. Um, they were basically saying that the, the highest of their bill had been in the past for the same amount of service was a hundred and twenty, where this one was four ninety-five.
So the bill for a given month was not four ninety-five, it was two fifty-six, is that correct? Or two thirty-nine? Two fifty-six? Was that, was that?
One's water, one's sewer.
One's water, one's sewer.
Four ninety-five eighty-four is the total bill. If you go back two pages, I mean, they have months and months of bills that are exactly thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thirty-six, thirty-eight.
And then they have the one that went up to eighty-one, so I mean, it more than doubled and that didn't raise any red flags. But uh, now, there is precedent also for granting, right? I vaguely remember, I mean, at least ten years ago, reading in the No Faults Times that there was a woman who was granted relief from, I think she had a running toilet as well, she wasn't a nonprofit. I, I remember there was a lot of back and forth before it was finally agreed to, but I think there is precedent on both sides of this issue, just to be fully forthcoming. But I do tend to agree that the best path forward would be to offer a payment plan without interest if the water was used. And running toilets, you can hear them.
No, often this kind of leak you cannot.
Oh, really?
Yeah. That's?
My building, I hear them. The work.
Well, you, that's a different type of leak, but this, this type of toilet leak you can, you can often not hear, and it's very frustrating. But um it's fixable, too. I, I, I'm comfortable, are, anybody else wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I didn't mean if that type of leak, it's when water enters the building, in my building, I can hear it entry, so if it runs for any extended period of time, I know there's a problem. It's totally separate.
Anybody have any problem with Rebecca's suggestion of the uh payment plan with no interest?
What, what was your thought, Tim?
I'm fine with that, too.
Does Nancy work out the details, or hope somebody works out the details of what the payment plan is? We, we don't have to do that.
Say a six-month payment plan?
Yeah, that seems fine. Six-month payment plan, no interest. That's, that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is a discussion to authorize posting um voter guides that are published by the League of Women Voters in our clerk's lobby. I'd like to make a motion that we provide these voter guides.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, next item, initial review to consider changing the section of Elting Avenue and Innes Avenue between Hasbrook and Route two oh eight near the Mountain Laurel School into a one-way street that heads north, up Elting, bears left onto Innes, and then heads down into two oh eight. And that's the discussion. Uh, you know, I, I just, I've brainstormed with Planner Gilmore about this, I've spoken with some community members, um, when, I, I've spoken with Superintendent Blue about this concept, and I even called the Mountain Laurel School to see what they thought about it. Because I've, I've actually witnessed this for several years now, when the Mountain Laurel parents pick up their children, they come north on two oh eight and make a right up Innes and often create a, a collection of cars that back up into two oh eight. And that intersection of two oh eight and Main Street is already a challenged intersection. So by changing that whole area to, to one-way, parents who continue to choose to drive and pick up their kids at the, the doorway would head up Elting and then exit down Innes and then have to make a right. They could probably still make a right or a left onto two oh eight. But just the idea that we wouldn't have that backup onto two oh eight with cars trying to go north, and Planner Gilmore also feels that it's a very challenging left-hand turn to make. Let's say you were leaving Main Street on two oh eight, making a left up Innes, that's also a very challenging left. So that whole area is a, is a, is a difficult spot. So when I shared this with the director at the Mountain Laurel School, she was incredibly excited and said that they had actually hoped for this for many years, and they think that in addition to dealing with that um traffic congestion issue in the afternoons during pickup and probably in the mornings during drop-off, uh, they just feel it would be much safer because they're, the Mountain Laurel School has a building on Innes, and then they also have a building diagonally across the street on Elting, so the kids are going back and forth throughout the day. It, it's, it's a, it's a challenged area and um?
So, Mountain Laurel School causes traffic issues which currently occur on two oh eight. They would probably have some tra, new traffic issues in trying to turn left from school onto two oh eight, but that's okay because the Mountain Laurel traffic issues would remain with the Mountain Laurel community and not affect the larger community on two oh eight. So I understand, but it makes sense.
That's, that's an additional benefit to, you know, yeah.
I'm just wondering, though, I use that street with some frequency, both coming and going. And uh I do it sometimes when I just look ahead and I can see that there will be a challenge making the left turn from two oh eight onto?
Wait, explain where you are.
Say, driving uh south on two oh eight. You have that first little uh option on uh?
Innes.
It would be going up Innes.
Uh, but if you don't, you go one block farther and you go to Hasbro. And you make the left on Hasbro. That often is an interestingly challenging left turn to make. But, I mean, I, uh, it's not, it, for me, it's merely a matter of some convenience. I just wonder if we're, are we creating another traffic issue in making the left turn from two oh eight onto Hasbro?
I think that's a really curious choice of yours, that you go up Innes instead of continuing making a left on Hasbro. I don't see what you gain by doing that.
Well, I gain, I actually gain a lot, because if I, if I look ahead, I can see people backed up on two oh eight.
Okay.
And I tip up Innes.
And then you still gotta go down Elting and then make another left onto Hasbro.
Correct.
So you're kinda rolling the dice that there's not a backup on Hasbro.
But I've never lost.
So he wants it one way or the other, actually?
Never lost.
Yeah, I, actually, the, um, the issue, I, I can see what Tom is saying, because very often the cars are, are stopped for the light and if drivers are considerate, they're going to leave a space, so you're gonna be able to get through anyway, versus also, um, if you go a little further, the traffic starts again, you may be sitting there for a while, and the speed in that short distance is considerably, considered, considerably different. Because versus be, you know, stopping for a light, they're coming down the hill and people tend to be going much faster at that spot.
I, I would venture a guess of there's not enough people who make that left turn into up Innes to contribute to additional traffic problem on two oh eight, lockdown.
I would hope not, that's the reason why I use it.
And I can share that um Planner Gilmore and I spoke with Blue about this idea, and he, he had no issues from a DPW perspective. We talked about plowing and, and what that would mean, and he was, he was comfortable with dealing with this road if it were to become a, a one-way. And this was also just a preliminary discussion. The, uh, you know, I, I wanted to take the temperature of the board on this before we formally pursue this. Planner Gilmore raised it also preliminary at a TIC meeting last night, because this would? raised it also preliminary at a TIC meeting last night, because this would require some DOT involvement if we were to move forward on changing this local law regarding these two streets. So this is a very preliminary stage.
Something good to give to me.
I have a question that's related, but only in a way that I'm just not quite sure what's going on. I know that the proprietors of Baca's purchased property next to them and were clearing trees. And from, I I don't know this for certain, but I had heard that their intent was to put in a parking lot there. And I don't-
Well, I I know that that property owner has actually contacted our building department and had four different concepts for what he would like to be there. And what I believe was testing the waters in terms of, well, could I build this, or could I build that, or could I build? And and I feel like that is part of the function of our building department to interface with the community. But I also felt like our building inspector could also say, I'm not going to help explain every possible iteration of what might be built there. You know, choose your top two favorite, as opposed to merely using like our free consulting services. So absolutely, there are thoughts that that property owner has some thoughts about doing something different. And one of the, one of the thoughts includes keeping it as is. So there were several, several concepts that were asked to be vetted by our building department.
I was actually gonna make an announcement before we adjourn related to that. So I'm glad to put it up, Rebecca. I'm the liaison to the shade tree commission. And they'll be meeting tomorrow night. The removal of those trees at that site have been the topic of many, many, many emails. We have a, we have a a law, local law, that property owners are to get permission before removing historic shade trees. And that wasn't done in this case. And there's a lot of people very concerned about what's happened to those those beautiful shade trees. There's also a couple of roots that with the cooperation of the property owner, the shade tree commission is looking to relocate and see if they can, they can preserve what's left of those trees. But so stay tuned, there'll be a shade tree commission meeting tomorrow night that will address some of the stuff going on on this property.
So we'll just put that concept of a potential one-way in this area that we're describing on our on our comeback list. We could even do it for that first meeting in October. I I had one other item that I wanted to add to our agenda. I forgot to add it earlier. So I'd like to add it now. A request of the board to approve two hundred and fifty dollars for food for the participants at the workshop that's taking place at Bosse's hosted by the village. This is again related to the EPA grant, where we'll be discussing flood resiliency, watershed planning, green infrastructure. So we have several individuals who will be participating. And the the ask is to provide them with some food.
So move-
Do I have to abstain if I'm going and I eat?
Yes.
So if you're okay, bring us that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Quick question. I I have it out of my car. From last meeting packet, I got a, I think I just got a bill for a hundred dollars for membership dues and something I'd never heard of in my board packets. It was from Rosendale, some address, some organization I don't know. Is that your fee? Looks like it.
Did you, did you join?
No, I I kind of shook my head and closed the binder. All right, I'll I'll fetch that out and show it to you. Okay.
Somebody is targeting.
Okay, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, with Mr. Gilmore's current announcement.
Did you want to, did you, you, I think you commented on the the sidewalk piece.
I, as long as you're, didn't have any other questions on the sidewalk enhancement project, that was essentially my report for that. You can take from the discussion on anybody who's-
Thanks.
Second, the movement to adjourn.
Good stuff. So now we can go to the town planning board meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It was a, it was an interview for a vacant position.
But if we can't make a decision, we have to, if we have the-